Yeah.
Councilman Sedano, Councilman Lawman.
Yeah.
Councilman Maza.
Yeah.
President King.
This is a regular conference of the city council as incorporated in the annual meeting notice of 2011 which was filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the bulletin board on December 28, 2011, in sense of the Starlight and homeless community compliance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law of New Jersey. Public speaking is anyone present who wishes to address city council and we do so at this time. Yes, sir, please leave your name and full address.
I have returned from Elizabeth, New Jersey. There's a city councilman that lives on Parker Road. There was someone that got bumped off on Parker Road.
City council, get one.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who wishes to address city council and we do so at this time? Once again, anyone present who wishes to address the council and we do so at this time. See, none of them. Close that portion of the meeting. Before we go on to new business, this is my last conference meeting of the year as president, and I want to thank my colleagues for their support and help this year. It's been a very productive year. I want to thank you all personally. Also, I want to thank Yolanda and the staff of the clerk's office. They do a tremendous job.
Thank you.
And also the other unsung heroes in our city. When we get complaints about trees down or electricity out or dead animals in the street, whatever, just the city workers who on a daily basis go out and respond to the calls and work on the best interests of the residents of the city. So I want to thank them and everybody at the city. Thank you very much. Moving on to new business.
Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to Horizon Select Services, Inc., Scataway, New Jersey, for the purchase of maintenance for the 911 system for the police and fire departments for the period December 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012, at a total cost of $62,797.80.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to First Independent Auto Repair Service, LSC, Roselle Park, New Jersey, for transmission repairs for various departments for the period December 7, 2011 through March 31, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $150,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to Atlantic Detroit Diesel Allison LLC, Lodi, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period of December 31, 2011 through February 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract.
I recognize Councilman Grover. Good evening, Councilman.
Good evening.
Okay. Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to General Sales Administration, trading as Major Police Supply, Kenville, New Jersey, for the purchase of eight Alfa mobile camera systems, mobile license plate readers, at a total cost of $176,685.38.
Comments?
Let me just... Councilman, this is supposed to be for the... I guess the camera going to speak on the way.
No, it's like the vehicles.
Oh, with vehicles. Oh, I see. Okay. With vehicles. I got that. I see. Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to J&amp;M National Spring Company, Newark, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair of heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period of December 31, 2011 through February 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to Air Brake and Equipment, Hillside, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period December 31, 2011 through February 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 19, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to Matthews Lock &amp; Safe Company, Elizabeth, to purchase locksmith services and lockroom hardware for various departments for the period of December 18, 2011 through December 10, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $130,000.
Comments?
Mr. President, just let us go. Tony, why are we going into 2013 of all these contracts?
I think this is part of the state contract law. So I'll check a year. I guess you get a year. I'll check.
Yeah.
Check for... Yeah, they're overlapping.
Right.
Two-year period, but probably do a year. There's a couple there for like six months and three months and some for two years. Three years. Four years. I'll check on them.
Other comments?
Yeah. Do we spend this kind of money yearly, basically, $130,000 a lot?
No, no. No, it's an open-ended contract. You can spend up to that amount, but that really happens.
We never go up to that amount, right?
No, it really happens, and if you do, you have to come back to city council.
Yeah, but it's a lot of money. Change a lot of lockers. I mean, what do they do? They breaking lockers every day?
No, it's just again, so...
I don't know. Can you let me know what we spent last year and the year before on lockers for this company?
On lockers.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to Warnock Fleet, Hanover, New Jersey, for the purchase of five Dodge Charger Police Cruisers at a cost of $26,189 each, for a total cost of $130,945 under the Cranford Police Cooperative Pricing System.
Comments?
This is coming from drug money.
Yeah, from the good money.
Is that a crime?
Yeah, this is... They originally had the shippers picked out and they were sold.
And these are not replacements? These are just new vehicles additions? Why are we going away from the Crown picks?
Because as I said, they were just sold out. There was 20 on order from one place. We had five on order. They had 20, and we put down an intent to purchase. It was on... So we had to go through.
To the notch.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Business Administrator. Recommending awarding a contract to Campbell Freight Liner, Edison, New Jersey, for maintenance and repair services for heavy-duty vehicles for various departments for the period December 31, 2011 through February 28, 2013, at a cost not to exceed $50,000.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the city attorney. Requesting of your honorable body to consider the introduction of ordinance approving and authorizing the contract of sale and the conveyance of the property located on South Front Street, the former Bourne Chemical Property, to the Elizabeth Marine Terminal, LLC, subsidiary of Jay Cashman, Inc., at the purchase price of $2,359,000. In the event that the structures are not built, there is a provision requiring a minimum of $200,000 per year of additional compensation to be paid to the city.
Comments?
What's going to be the tax rate on this property once, if in fact it's built?
Well, we're over the regular tax rate.
Can you find out that estimate, Tony?
Well, it's for next year.
No, no, no. What's going to be the assessed value on this property?
Oh, the assessed value, not the tax rate.
They're paying us the 2.5, 2.3. And they're going to build a 70,000 square foot building. I wonder what kind of revenue in addition you would get.
Okay. Assessed value.
That's great. So we're getting another property back on the tax.
Yes.
Right. Councilman Maza.
Tony, what is the cost of cleaning up the site? How much money the city is going to be coming?
No cost to the city.
No cost to the city. Where the money is coming from?
It's part of the contract. They have to remediate it to the point that DEP will either give them a no further action letter or they have to let some sort of inspector in regularly to inspect the property. So we don't have any part in that. That's all part of the contract. So...
So there's no recourse against the city of Elizabeth. Okay, then they're doing a good job.
No. Under a new statute, municipalities are immune. They need foreclose upon toxic properties.
Third and Ward or Second?
No, actually, it's the Second Ward.
Second Ward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, got it. It's not about that relocation.
That's right.
The other side of the river.
Right. But that... Like, um...
Any other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 7, 2011, from Chief Financial Officer. Requesting authorization for the tax collector refund cancel and overbilling of the 2011 property taxes on the property located at 224 South Street in the amount of $10,227.32.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 20, 2011, from Chief Financial Officer. Advising that additional grants may be appropriated in 2012 state fiscal year budget by Budget Amendments, Chapter 159. The County of Union Recycling Enhancement Grant, 2010, other expenses in the amount of $20,000. State of New Jersey Department of Transportation, North Broad Street Street Escape, 2010, other expenses in the amount of $530,000. State of New Jersey Department of Commerce and Economic Development, Urban Enterprise Zone Marketing Plan, 2011, other expenses in the amount of $204,880. State of New Jersey Department of Commerce and Economic Development, Urban Enterprise Zone Programs and Initiatives, 2011, other expenses in the amount of $52,345,500.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Okay. Letters dated December 5, 2011. I have three of them, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for an urban enterprise zone contract amendment extension for the renewable energy capital stimulus grant, the Midtown Area Sewer Rehabilitation Infrastructure Improvement Project, Professional Engineering Design Services Project, and the Broad Street Street Escape Project Phase 3 until December 31, 2012.
Comments?
What are the changes that are taking place, Tony? Can you find out? Why did you change the board?
No, they're just extending.
An extension, yeah.
Just extending it, that's all.
Extend the time? Did it spend any more?
Yeah. We didn't spend up to the grand amounts of the city.
Other comments? Put them on, please.
Letter dated December 12, 2011, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials to execute any and all documents necessary and appropriate to partially discharge the city's mortgage on property located at 144-152 First Street, Unit A, with brand new day for sale housing.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 12, 2011, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for an urban enterprise zone contract amendment extension of the urban enterprise zone gateway revitalization feasibility study until September 30, 2012.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 14, 2011, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for an urban enterprise zone contract amendment extension for the urban enterprise zone design improvement program until June 31, 2012.
Councilman Provo.
Tony, this is obviously another extension, which means we didn't use the money. We should get our guys out there. I mean, there's probably people out there that could use this money.
Yeah. I spoke... We brought it up at the last meeting and I did speak to Director of Public Works and also Planning to ask for an extended effort to...
I mean, money's there. Money's there, obviously.
We have a couple of buildings.
I mean, there's businesses out there that probably could use the money. Let's go out there and try to...
Yeah, we have... General Blough, the plumber's retiring. I have a young man on board to be...
Definitely, we got some businesses out there that maybe don't even know this program exists.
No, they don't. They know. They just don't want to spend it.
Oh.
They know.
Businesses know.
Absolutely. Not sitting on the board. Janet goes with a secretary and a couple of the merchants to different area that we've been targeting, and they're just some people that just don't, but they don't want to spend any money.
Who knows, they want to spend the money.
Business.
The business.
Business, right?
I mean, it's free money, but they don't want to go for whatever.
Really?
They got the permit, you know, all the requirements. Even the guy on the corner, Brose, he had to go to court for at least 10 tickets, I think he got, until he did what we requested him to do.
Yeah, but it's our... Well, we have the grant.
I know.
Eligible.
And they could use this for sidewalks. They could use this for signs.
Sidewalk, yeah.
Windows.
Right.
I mean, the gates. I mean, this is all part of the...
Yes, I know.
Very broad, what you want to call it, broad money grant, so... All right.
They were all notified. They were all invited to come to our meeting. There were people, generals.
You're talking about Broad Street.
Broad Street.
Yeah, but I'm...
East Jersey, whatever.
But there's other areas.
I understand. Whatever area...
First Street, Second Street, Third Street.
Yeah. I sit on a six-word area, so, I mean... And there's been people that they're just, they're happy with what they have. I'm telling you, it's ridiculous, but...
Any other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 14, 2011, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting that your honorable body consider the approval of the urban enterprise zone proposal for funding of the historic Midtown Elizabeth Special Improvement District for the period of January 1, 2012 through December 31, 2012, in the amount of $114,188.
Comments?
And this budget is done to the bones, Mr. President. All the money that they cut or they use it, then they give it to EDC, the 243,000 campaigning, whatever, money to be used.
Other comments? Put it on, please.
I have three letters dated December 15, 2011, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for an urban enterprise zone contract amendment extension of the urban enterprise zone Elizabeth Port Street Skate Project, the Westfields Avenue Medium Bucation Planting Project, and the Elizabeth Avenue Street Skate Project Phase 4 until December 31, 2012.
Comments?
Put them on.
Put them on, please.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Director of Planning and Community Development. Requesting authorization for the proper city officials to sign the donor agreement between the Salvation Army and the Division of Youth and Family Services in using the property located at 1018 East Grand Street, Elizabeth, as the in-kind contribution needed to qualify for the $48,679 funding from the Division of Youth and Family Services.
Comments?
Put them on. Your money's spent wisely.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Director of Public Works. Recommending awarding a contract to T&amp;M Associates, Middletown, New Jersey, to provide civil engineering services in connection with the traffic signal design and construction inspection of North Broad Street and Westfield Avenue at a cost not to exceed $81,850.
Where is the Westfroard?
By the post office.
By the post office.
Oh. I'm thinking Westfield, there. No, no. No. Comments?
Yeah, can you hold this up until I speak to Mr. Papelli and then... No, get... Put them on and then I'll talk to him. I have some question to ask.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Traffic is now obsolete.
It is.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Director of Public Works. Recommending awarding a contract to Z Brothers Concrete Contractors, Inc., Saraville, New Jersey, for the North Broad Street Street Skate Project at a cost of $699,298.60.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 19, 2011, from the Director of Public Works. Requesting authorization to withdraw Revax's bid where item number one, general project cost, was calculated as $144,043, but transposed to the bid submission as $4,043, which according to Revax resulted in a discrepancy of $140,000 between the price they intended to submit versus what was actually submitted, and is recommending awarding the contract to Underground Utilities Corporation, Linden, New Jersey, for the South Street Flood Control Project at a cost of $998,684.80.
Give a second. So...
Councilor.
I got a question. So the bid, the first bid now drops down to under $500,000, under $600,000.
They withdrew it, though.
They're the ones that withdrew?
They want to withdraw. That's how I'm taking it.
I mean, it's legally binding.
No, it's not really binding until we enter into a contract.
Really?
Why don't you re-advertising it? Reject the bid and re-advertise, like we did with so many others, so we get the right figure.
I mean, if they're withdrawing and they want to move with this one, I mean, this is...
I haven't... This is the first I hear of you, so...
Yeah, it's going to take long. I wouldn't want to delay it any further, the work we can do there.
Yeah, but Councilman, 47 years that bridge has been floating. We talking about $200,000 or better to be able to say for the city, the job will be done by rejecting, what are they talking about, few months? The job is not going to start in January, February because of the winter.
Councilman, I want to get the law departments to be honest.
I mean, this is the first time that I see it. You could look into it, whether it should be rebid and, you know, get back to you before...
Is there consensus to hold it?
Well, I'd like to, as the second ward councilman, to move it forward, and if there's a reason to hold it, then hold it. I don't want to hold the project in my word there for nine years.
I don't blame you. I just...
Because somebody withdrew their bid and now they're going to the second lowest bidder.
No. I just initially had a concern about the legality of the issue.
Right.
Okay. So if... But I don't know.
We don't know. That's right, because...
So in deference to the second ward councilman...
If there's an honest mistake, I'm sure that...
Well, that's probably why the guy withdrew, because he probably figured he couldn't do the project for $700,000. That's something I could think of.
Let's see what the law says.
Yeah.
You want to put a...
I mean, you know, I'm not trying to...
Put it on the law department's review.
Put it on, put it on subject to law department.
That's it. I don't want to hold down the project, but at least $200,000, I'm sure I'm going to pay $30 out of that package.
Yeah, I mean, but it all due deference. I agree with that. I just have a concern that it be vetted properly through the law department to make sure.
Well, we had previous other cases similar to this one, and we were able to reject it.
Okay.
Not too long ago.
So putting on...
The county was adamant to approve a contract on somebody on a tolling or whatever, and we did reject it.
I mean, in this case, the guy, the guy is the one that withdrew.
The guy's got it, right. That's what I'm saying.
It's a little different, but... And it does say in the letter here, the bid was reviewed by the city attorney, has to form the financial director review to approve the financial statement. So I'm assuming they've looked at it, they're recommending and suggesting.
That's fine.
But I don't have any problem putting it on.
Putting it on subject to the law department review. Very good. Thank you. Other comments? Put it on, please.
Letter dated December 20, 2011, from the Director of Public Works. Requesting change order number one to the contract awarded on January 28, 2011, to Applied Landscape Technologies, Inc., in the amount of $2,140,306, specifically for the removal and disposal of excess soil from the site in the amount of $144,711.65, raising the amount of the contract to $2,140,306.
Comments? Put it on, please.
Councilman Sedano has requested a handicap at 1448 Lexington Place be added to the agenda. Letter dated December 13, 2011, from the Police Director. Requesting permission to establish handicap personalized parking or personalized parking spaces, as well as deletions of spaces no longer needed. Second Ward, 553 Maple Avenue, a personalized.
Hold, please.
First Ward, personalized, 439 First Avenue.
Put it on.
First Ward, 328 Franklin Street, personalized.
Put it on.
Sixth Ward, 25 Christine Street, personalized.
Put it on hold. One second. Is this handicap already there on 25? They want to go personalized or is just the first time they're requesting?
Can't tell, can you?
No? All right. Put them on hold right now.
There's no mutation. You want this on hold?
Yeah. Thank you.
First Ward, 4400 Marshall Street, personalized.
Um, Marshall. Marshall Street's a big handicap parking space. Can we hold that up and go on if you can have the... See how many are on that 400 block in Marshall Street? Depending the answer to that. How many are there already on that? On that block, please.
First Ward, 506 Fulton Street, personalized.
That's fine. Put it on.
Fifth Ward, 743 Jefferson Avenue.
Hold.
First Ward, 217 Bond Street.
That's fine.
Sixth Ward, 629 Marshall Street.
Hold, please.
Okay.
Deletions, 980 Coolidge Road, 84 Clover Street, and 4521 Walnut. Letter dated December 15, 2011, from the Police Director. Requesting on behalf of Jacobson and Company, East Grand Street, Elizabeth, for the installation of a loading zone on the north side beginning 304 feet east of Madison Avenue between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., Monday through Friday.
Put it on hold, please. After review.
Go on, on that issue, I'm sorry, Mr. President. We had asked for the gutter crew, the loading zone on Rankin Street.
Mm-hmm.
From Deli. Still nothing put up.
It's still...
Yeah, I was looking into that today, Councilman. And I know it hasn't been put up.
Okay.
Okay, so that...
Actually texted John Scapani this evening, got back to me.
Okay.
I don't know where that's at. I don't know if he's held up, works, or... I have a few of those that we approved back on November 22. I also have a handicap parking that was, hasn't been put up.
Put up.
It was at the same time that we approved the one on Rankin.
So I got a couple of locations too that we approved over a month and a half ago and nothing went up. I got a couple of phone calls.
It takes a minute.
Might be because of Christmas, you know, holidays, you know, people taking their vacation.
Right.
Christmas lighting. I saw the manpower's not there to do all this work.
Vacation.
That was one of the reasons that I told a few of those people that need the handicap That was one of the reasons that I told few of those people that, me, the handicap of my ward, and I told them, just be patient another week or two, until the new year, I'm sure they're gonna accommodate you.
Okay, next time.
Letter dated December nineteen, two thousand eleven, from the Police Director, requesting permission to establish handicap parking spaces. Fifth Ward, four fifty-one Walnut Street, they're going from a personalized to a regular.
Yes, we are putting this change.
Second Ward, eight twenty Garden Street, personalized.
That's okay.
Okay, Second Ward, nine hundred Grove Street, personalized.
I'll give you all the same, but don't...
So a regular?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, disappeared five thirty-three Green Street, and deleted five thirty-six Marshall Street. Councilman Grover has requested a handicap at one thirty-four Franklin Street be added. Councilman Sodano has requested personalized handicap be added at fourteen forty-eight Lexington Place. Now, Mr. Zingaro received a response from Mr. Kennedy, the School Business Administrator Board Secretary, in response to the Governor's Toolkit Initiative Best Practices Checklist regarding the joint yearly meeting between the City and the Board of Education, and its tentatively scheduled for January seventeenth, two thousand twelve, at six thirty PM.
Yeah, well, the, I'd like to have the President of the City Council, if possible, at that time. At that time, Yolanda and myself, at least. I've asked our, some of our directors to come up with some type of ideas, reports, basically from recreation, the Health Department, and also the Police Department, and the Public Works, Public Works Recycling, the Health Department as far as Office on Youth and Services, if there's any type of joint, shared services or programs we can combine and initiate. And this would also go to help our best practices of rating with the State of New Jersey, so this will fill our...
Who was on it last year?
Last year, I think, uh... That was, yeah, that was, I guess, in, around February, March, sometime.
Yeah, Councilman Gonzalez, if you don't mind, would you take the lead on this? I mean...
Yeah, we'll have reports, we'll have an agenda set up for six thirty, we'll have...
I'd like to see who was on it last year, I'd like to have some continuity.
Basically, Yolanda, myself, and...
Last year? A couple of years ago, we had several council people on it, there were like two or three.
Well, there was a couple in the audience, if I remember. Councilman Jackus and Councilwoman Perkins. Came in like late on, on the side, we had it in the council chambers, and... But that was, that was only a limited section. Again, myself, Yolanda, Councilman Keenan, and Frank Quest, I believe, was on there too. Frank Quest was there.
Maybe you could get that.
Yeah, with all due respect, I think Councilman Gonzalez needs to take the leadership role, let him make his decision.
Yeah, sure, it'll be fine, let us know, and we'll find out.
Just give me the list of who was on it last year.
Yeah, we'll find out who's coming from the Board of Ed. Last year, they had the Business Administrator, Bud Kennedy, and a couple of their commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, just from the... Who was part of that?
Yeah, well, it was Frank Quest, and Councilman Keenan, Yolanda, and myself.
Thank you very much.
The Senior Citizens Awareness Committee is requesting commendations, I believe this came from Councilwoman Perkins Dastie, the fourth Dream Keepers Awards Luncheon, where the Honorable J. Christian Bowedge, Kenneth and Charlotte Brown, Detective Dennis L. Cabarley, Allison Carter, King Nesbit Good, Detroit Hudson, Georgia L. Jones Esquire, Deacon Ernest Smith, Von Smith Larkin, and Detective Darren K. Williamson will be honored at the luncheon of Galloping Hills Traders Saturday, January fourteenth, two thousand twelve.
We wish you a commendation.
Commendation point, put it on.
So long. Councilman Mazza has also requested a memorial for Maria Colletti.
Put it on.
A petition, somewhat of a petition, was filed by the Secondhand Dealers and Gold Diaries Association, and in your packages, you should have a response from Mr. Lawrence Finn, the zoning officer, in response to your concerns.
I don't have a copy, I'm...
You don't have one? I have copies of the council. You have it?
Yes, let me just... Just receive, receive the letters and review it, and if your president in January wishes to take some action, we'll listen. Councilman Gonzalez, your thoughts on the agenda setting session, conference meeting for, please, at the booth?
Yes.
You're trying to digest it.
What?
Time to digest it.
No, no, not that, the conference meeting on...
For the time.
Oh, I thought that we had agreed at the last meeting, three o'clock would be good for everyone? Is that still good, Manny, Frank?
What day is this?
On the third?
Yeah, three o'clock is okay with me, two thirty is fine, yeah.
Three o'clock, everybody?
The reorg is still...
Yeah, we all from school anyway.
Reorg is maybe...
President, we all from school that day.
We are.
If I got something going on, it won't be.
National holiday.
Right now, I don't have any... I'll block off.
Thanks, thanks.
Three PM, three o'clock, you got it, huh?
Alright, y'all?
Okay.
Once around, Councilman Gullman.
Hey, Mr. President, I just want to say that, I just want to congratulate you on such a hell of a meeting this year.
Thank you.
And I was very proud of you, and the emails were good, so... Respectfully, and for the public, see, that's just one of them.
I'm gonna be happy seeing you next door.
But I do, I do appreciate coming on board, we'll do absolutely well, so...
I'm sure you're...
I'll punch you real fast.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gullman. Councilman Gonzalez?
I just want to echo the sentiments of my colleague, Councilman Gullman. Thank you again for your service, you know, in the past year, and we look forward to continuing our work together.
Absolutely, thank you, Councilman Gullman, thank you.
Good job, Mr. President.
Councilman Mazza?
Good job, Mr. Bez.
Thank you, sir, Councilman Beck?
Did a very nice job.
Appreciate it very much. Have a great holiday, everybody, motion for adjournment.